This is the President's comments. I'd like to thank everyone who participated in the Fourth of July parade and craft show. The event was a major success. The A R P A drains improvement project is scheduled to start in the weekend, July seventeenth. The project has two locations, Grant and Charleston Road. Contracted plans to work on Grant first and then use it to Charleston. Proposed improvements are intended to reduce flooding at the low points of Fifth Street, Grant Street, and Charleston Road. Weather permitting, the project is anticipated to be completed in September. Update on the stand pipe, also known as the Hinsdale water tower. Work on the water tower exterior and interior is substantially complete. The contract is begun immobilizing the site. Public Works hopes to bring the tank back online later this week. Is it online yet? Thankfully, thankfully, there's been no interruption. You ought to be able to take this one off. Tollway, this week Tollway contractors will be identifying tree removals with white paint
Mark in lieu of surface retention. Staff will be meeting on site with the Tollway this week to review the trees marked for Not on the agenda that wishes to speak to the village? Okay. So, takes us to the first, and I think because Matt's not here, I'm going to take his, his things. I think that's the understanding. So, the first read relates to a, a resolution designated Hinsdale Bank and Trust as the public depository and authorizing the deposit withdrawals of village money and designated the village president, village manager, the village trust treasurer, and the village finance director as their authorized signatories on the new account of Hinsdale Bank and Trust. So, the reason for this is, my understanding is that we, we used to bank at BMO, is that right? And we get, we'll get a higher interest rate on village funds if we bank with Hinsdale Bank and Trust. And moreover, it's nice to have a, a local bank for our account. So, is Dennis, I thought Dennis was gonna be here. Dennis, okay. Dennis, one question I had, and I know you wrote something on this, one of the concerns that I had, and I, I know your bank is, you know, solid and solvent and all that, but, you know, there's been some issues with banks in California and elsewhere, smaller and mid-sized banks that have had some issues with, you know, the insurance for larger deposits and whether the F D I C deposit would, or insurance would cover that. So, I know we, we keep a substantial amount of cash at the bank, so I'm just wondering if you could explain to trustees how we make sure that those, that cash is protected in the extremely unlikely event that something would happen to your event, your bank.
I've had to answer this question a lot since that weekend in March.
Yeah, I'm sure.
And I'll let you know when that weekend, when that news broke, ran into the bank and said, okay, if they're, if the one that most people know about is, has ninety-two percent of their deposits uninsured, what's our calculation look like today? And I'm not going to talk about the specific number, it's public knowledge when we file a call report.
Sure.
But it was well under twenty percent.
Okay.
But anyway, that really doesn't matter. And as I said in the letter that I addressed to you, there's really no plausible, no good reason for the village of Hinsdale to take any exposure to that. And part of it is because of my parent organization. And the parent organization that owns Hinsdale Bank and Trust is a local company called Wintrust Financial. And Wintrust has fifteen different charters, fourteen of them in Illinois, northern Illinois, and one in the Milwaukee area. The one in the Milwaukee area, when I watch the Cubs play at Milwaukee Stadium and see Wintrust, Milwaukee's bank on the bottom, sort of, you know, how did that happen? Because here we are, of course, in Chicago's bank. So, that fifteen charter system gives us the ability to insure a municipality fifteen times the amount that normal deposit, the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that normal deposit insurance would take or provide for. There's also a nuance in the F D I C Act that allows municipalities to double count, by double count, demand deposits, checking accounts, or separately insured from investment accounts. So, the program that we put in front of the village is a checking account where you run your, your, your business activity. And on that, and I don't want to get too deep into the weeds here, but on that you earn an earnings credit, which offsets the normal charges that you might see for depositing checks, clearing checks, cash deposits, those sorts of things. And then any excess over that goes into a money market account fund, which has separate insurance and pays a pretty good rate of interest these days, north of five. So, that is the first line of defense. And the combination of those two provides for two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand times fifteen times two, minus two-fifty for something that is a nuance in the F D I C rules that says that it, we can't give you double insurance for a bank that's out of state. So, that's the reason for that. So, seven and a quarter. Over and above that, and we do this with Rick right now, sixty municipalities that you have responsibility for, Rick Morales, my colleague is, handles our municipal relationships. And they number about sixty right now in the metropolitan area. And it's municipals and other governmental kind of entities. We pledge our securities to secure that. And our securities are, in your case, because of your investment policy, will be restricted to treasuries and direct U.S. Treasury agencies. They're mark-to-market every day to make sure that the market value is in excess of the amount that's over and above the insured amount. And then anytime you need that report, you get it, once a month, you get it automatically with all the details of the security that is your collateral, Q sub numbers, maturity dates, market value, and things like that. So, the combination of seven and a quarter million dollars in F D I C insurance, plus a pledge of securities protects the village.
Yeah.
Incidentally, those securities ironically are not held by us, they're held in safekeeping for your benefit at, of all places, BMO.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I noticed that.
Yeah.
Okay. So, you know, now, one question I have for, for the finance people is, now that interest rates are up around close to five percent for short-term, you know, I think the two-year T-bill and the rate is like four-point-nine percent. And I didn't care about this in prior years because the T-bill rate was like zero. But now that's higher, are we, are we making some effort to make sure we don't have a large balance in our checking account at the bank and make sure we sweep it into a, a treasury account?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And what do you keep, how do you determine that? What do you, how often do you sweep and what do you determine is a, what do you leave in the checking account?
So, what I do is I do like a three- or four-month average of what our bills are, and I make sure that I have at least one full month in there. And I determine usually every two weeks, I look at the balance, make sure that, you know, we don't have more in there, and then I'll sweep it.
Okay, okay. Any questions for Dennis? No? Thank you. Okay, that takes us next to the issue of the water rates, which is a-
Can we throw that on consent?
Sure, I'm sorry. Dennis, we'll put that on consent, there's no, we usually have a second read, but it's gonna be on consent, there's no reason for you to come back. The next item up for first read is a proven ordinance amending section seven, four, B two of the Village Code regarding water rates. And, you know, sadly, we're gonna have to increase water rates again, but this is not the village's fault. The DuPage Water Commission periodically increases rates, and as of May first, the, of this year, they increased the rate by approximately four-point-one percent. And we've just, we determined it's in the, in the best interest of the village and the community to increase our rates by the same amount, four-point-one percent. And what that will mean for the average resident is an increase of four dollars and eighty-four cents per month, or since we're billed on a two-month basis, nine dollars and seventy-eight cents to a residence' bimonthly water and sewer bill, which is all, which comes to fifty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents a year. So, you know, this is something we would not have done had it not been for the increase in the DuPage Water Commission rates of four-point-one percent. Any comments, discussion? Put this on the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, next item is a proven ordinance amending section, subsection three dash three thirteen A of the Village Code of Hinsdale relating to the number of liquor licenses. As you know, and for reasons that I've never quite understood, we have a limited amount of liquor licenses, and then we retire licenses and then create new licenses. The owner of the Hinsdale Wine Shop is selling his shop to, to a, a new owner, and so I think we're going to retire the license that the former owner had at Hinsdale Wine Shop and issue a new license to the new, new owner. So, you know, it's, it seems to be more of a mechanical process. So, anybody have any problem with that? Are the owners here? Yeah. It's, there's not an issue with this, unless you want to talk about it, there's really no, okay. Okay, put that on the consent agenda. Put the water rates on the consent agenda, anybody have a problem with that?
Right.
Okay, okay, great. This is moving right along. Okay, now you, Luke.
Yep, which moves us to agenda item six D.
Before we get there.
Yep.
So, the item that, for trustees on seven F, which was the approval of the, of the, the new properties for the, additional properties for the historic overlay district, I had talked to staff about not having two reads for this, I didn't intend for it to be on the consent agenda in the first instance. I just think since it went through the Historic Preservation Commission, it come to us, that after the first read, unless there's an issue, it should go on the consent agenda. But it somehow made its way onto the consent agenda the first time, so I'd like to pull that and have Luke talk about that, too.
Yep.
Does that all make sense, everybody just have one read and a consent agenda for historic homes? Okay.
And when they talk, we, well, we'll talk about it at the time.
Okay.
And there's an updated agenda at your places to reflect that requested change. We also updated it on the website.
Okay.
And it was just a technical error and a misunderstanding.
Sure. Okay, so, yours.
Great, which moves us to agenda item six D, and this is a first read. It relates to the exterior appearance and site plan that'll allow for changes to the existing building elevations, landscape and site plan for the property eleven Salt Creek Lane. The property is a four-story medical office building with approximately one-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand square feet on approximately three-point-nine acres. The property is in the oh-three general office district and is surrounded by all oh-three general office properties. There are no residential properties within two-hundred-and-fifty square feet. The existing site is non-conforming with respect to certain bulk regulations such as yards and setbacks. A representative from the property is here this evening, is gonna run through the details of the requested changes and provide an illustrative description of these changes. In general, however, these will include a construction drop-off and loading area near the main entrance on the rear or east side of the building. From a code perspective, they're gonna lose four parking spots, going to a total of one-hundred-and-seventy-two, which is well above the code requirement of one-hundred-and-sixty. There's gonna be changes to the landscaping plan, screening for the transformers that are located on the property, and the existing dumpster enclosure are gonna go to a dark brown track composite. The building elevations, which I'd asked the applicant to spend the most time on, removal of the portico entrance on the east and west side of the building to be replaced with a new white steel canopy and acrylic roof. And then entrance doors and trim on the south and west side elevations are gonna be replaced with white metal doors. There'll also be new lighting fixtures and windows. The Plan Commission did hold an, an initial public hearing on March eighth, and at the first meeting, several commissioners requested changes to the submitted plans, specifically with regards to the elevations, as they were not consistent with the colonial architectural style of other buildings or improvements that had been made to the surrounding buildings in the office park. Specifically, commissioners desired a more contemporary look and requested that the applicant return with modified request, which have been incorporated into the plans this evening. With that, the applicant returned in June to the Plan Commission, and the June, and at June, the Plan Commissioners did vote unanimously to recommend to us that we approve the plans as submitted. With that, I turn it over to the applicant for some illustrative descriptions of what we're doing here.
Thank you. My name is Dave Distor, I'm at Jensen Hallset Architects. We were asked to give a very brief description of what's happening, so if anytime anybody has any questions before or after, feel free to ask. As was mentioned by trustee Stifler, the building owner wishes to significantly upgrade the landscaping along Salt Creek Lane and rework some of the overgrown landscaping on the east side of the building, which is the parking lot, technically the backside, but really the main entrance to the building. And also with the main drop-off here, right now, we have a two-way drop-off with a very, very slim drop-off point, which is causing some potential safety issues. So, civil engineering was asked to rework this area of the parking lot, do a one-way flow, so people aren't trying to pull in one way and pull a U-turn to drop people off.
What are they dropping it off for? Just for the-
Yeah, so, again, so medical office building, so you do have quite a few elderly patients, so-
Got it, okay.
Lot, lot of drop-offs and for orthopedics and such.
Okay.
So, it was recreated, so there's a one-way flow out of here, so people aren't going in, trying to do a U-turn in an extremely tight space. Again, the landscaping here was gonna be dramatically upgraded. The landscape architect used here has done quite a few of the properties in that complex and done a beautiful job. This is well above and beyond what any of the village ordinances are. And in addition to that, doing a window replacement, which predicated from the March to the June meetings of updating the facade. So, right now, this, these are photos of the existing with the very colonial, portico shares on there. Again, very colonial detailing, the existing windows. And the existing windows, I believe, are original to the building, so they're not exactly the most energy efficient, and the owner would like to get those replaced out. The board had asked us to look at one of the buildings around the corner here and across the street to get ideas for what to do with the canopies. And from that, the street entrance side, we've got a freestanding supported canopy with an acrylic grip on there, got two different views of that, showing a little bit of the enhanced landscaping here. As well as were the main entrances on the east side of the building, a little bit beefier canopy, but hung by supports coming off the top. New entry door, doing a, a nice slider entry door on there. The front door here is also being replaced with, with a nice white, I wouldn't say plain, but very clean-looking door with the transom. And then the north and south employee entrances, get another smaller canopy, again, steel supported off of the existing structure with these struts with an acrylic rough, just to clean up the look.
This is all consistent with the, with the Plan Commission?
Yes.
Because I, I didn't quite understand their direction when they said it, they wanted to be consistent with the colonial architect texture, but they wanted it to be contemporary. Those seem to be conflicting ideas. I mean, how can you be both?
Yeah.
There were, there were differing opinions.
Oh, I see, I see, that wasn't a direction, that was a-
Yeah, and I think overall, the direction was to take it more contemporary.
Got it, got it.
The, the original plan had the, the windows with the horizontal, with the horizontal pieces here.
Right.
And-
But what you did is consistent with what other buildings have done in that same area.
Yeah, the newer, what the newer buildings have done.
Yeah, okay, got it.
And, and, and updated.
That was a final, understood.
Yep.
So, so you're, you're getting rid of the Chippendale entrance way things?
Yes.
And who is, is the owner driving these changes, or, or, I mean, the desire looked to be more contemporary, or?
Yeah, they wanted to, they definitely needed to change out those windows to get something more energy efficient for their tenants. We looked at some minor stuff for the entrances before, and that's where the, the Plan Commission had some issues, and asked us to go back and do something a little more contemporary with, with those canopies at those entrances. And that's basically what you're seeing here.
Looks good to me.
Yeah, good. I've got any questions?
Yeah. So, you want to explain the process?
Yeah, so this, we go to a second read, this will not go on the consent agenda only because zoning issues have to go for a full read, but unless you hear from staff, there's no, it's not necessary for you to come back.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Which now moves us to agenda item seven E on the new agenda. And this is an ordinance to approve eight additional properties within the historic overlay zoning district for inclusion on the historically significant structures property list pertaining to Title fourteen. You know, as this board is aware, last year, we created a historical overlay district to provide for economic and zoning incentives to property owners to rehab and preserve historically significant homes within the village. And earlier this year, we reviewed the first round of forty-six properties which were added to the list. At our June meeting, we added an additional fourteen properties, and on the list this evening is for an additional eight. There is a great amount of detail in the packet on each one of the properties, and I would note with President Colley's recommendation to move this to the consent agenda, at the Historic Preservation Commission, they go through each one of these properties one by one and look at each one of those specifically, which I think takes a lot of the onus off of us. If I was gonna direct trustees here, I, I would focus on the summary table, which is exhibit two, which describes all of the property's addresses, historic nature of them, and whatnot. I would also note that all of the property owners have given their consent to the property be included on the list. And also staff is, as I mentioned, there's a great amount of detail in the, in the packet. You know, with that, I don't have anything addition, additional to provide on any of the specific properties, but perhaps Bethany or Rob, you can give us an update on how Title fourteen is, is there any activity going on with the village around it, where do we stand?
Yeah, we've had a great, we've had a lot of people looking to be a part of this program. I think as of right now, we have sixty-eight properties that have been approved, and we have more coming. We have a special meeting with the Historic Preservation Commission for some extra properties next week. And we've officially approved, the HPC officially approved the first preservation incentive, and we have several more in the pipeline. And some of those are the larger projects as well. So, the financial incentives that eventually will come to the village board, and then some of the other ones that are just the bulk zoning regulations, as well as permit fee expediting and, and waivers. So, it's been a really great program. We've had a lot of people interested, so it's been good.
Good. Questions, comments, and trustees? Okay, consent agenda.
Bethany, you've done a fabulous job with this. I mean, all, the work you've done on this has just been tremendous, and I, I don't think this, this program would have gotten off the ground without your work. I mean, this is, this is really detailed, and I know it's your work product, so.
It's interesting, too.
It's interesting, but a lot of hard work, I know that.
And I would give kudos to the Historical Society as well. They've been really helpful in that they have a ton of information that the village actually doesn't. So, they, we've kind of relied on them to fill in some of the gaps, too.
Thank you.
Takes us to consent agenda, who had the accounts payable?
I did. We spent a lot of money last month.
Well, actually, since we only have meetings once a month, it brings a lot more money.
I was trying to figure that out, like, wow. Anyways, I'd like to make, first of all, I found everything, everything was in order, and I'd like to make a motion to approve payment of the accounts payable for the period of June eighth through July fifth, twenty-twenty-three, in the aggregate amount of two-million-seven-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand-three-hundred-six-thousand-two cents, is set forth on the list provided by the village treasurer, which a permanent copy is on file with the village clerk.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Pashima? Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Bank?
Aye.
Next. 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 Next.
The request is being driven by the large, large amount of turnaround traffic from the high school during school days and special events. Basically, the Foxgate entrance is right across the street from the, from the water tank. So when it's not only during the school hours, but also during a lot of sporting events, they get a lot of people that just pull in, turn around and go back. The request, the formal request this evening is for exterior appearance and site plans. And I would note that the gate is a wrought iron fence, or gate that will match the existing fence. It's four feet high and 28 feet wide. The gate meets all code requirements, and there will be no signage installed. Electronically, will be electronically controlled via remote and pin pad. The gate will, gate will also open inward so as to not interfere with traffic on 57th Street. May 10th, the plan commission meeting was held, and there was no public opposition to the gate. Ultimately, the PC voted, or the plan commission voted unanimously eight to zero to recommend approval to this board. Discussions at both the plan commission and at our last board meeting focused primarily around delivery trucks. It was determined that residents will instruct, will be instructed to provide PIN numbers for the delivery drivers when ordering, when ordering on Amazon or some other retailer. And the unique situation given, we believe, there was also a discussion given what we had at Kensington Square where, where we approved another gate, you know, as Hinsdale turning into a gated community. And we just, we, we had a discussion as trustees that no, that's not the case. This is very much, both of these are unusual circumstances that have met high, very high bars, and that this should not be viewed as something that is, you know, open for other situations without special events or without special circumstances. With that, I would open it up to questions, comments from trustees? You know, hearing none, I will make a motion to approve an ordinance approving exterior appearance plan and site plan to allow for the installation of an entrance gate across Foxgate Lane for the existing Foxgate subdivision in the village of Hinsdale. Second.
Roll call vote?
Trustee Pashima? Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher? Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Bank?
Aye.
Which moves us to agenda item eight C, which we have not heard from in almost a year. This is on the agenda as a second read as it pertains to the property located at 125 South Vine Street, which is being proposed to be converted into 12 age restricted housing units to be commonly known as Vine Street Station. This is, this is, as I said, this is on a referral for plan commission for the plan development detailed plan, exterior appearance, site plan review, a map amendment, tentative and final plot of subdivision, and a sign permit review. So we've got a lot of things going on here. To refresh this board's memory, approximately one year ago, Holiday Properties was here in front of us presenting the original concept plans. We referred the concept plan to the plan commission, where it heard the application and referred it back to this board with unanimous approval to recommend the concept plan, which we did in August of 2022. For the better part of the past year, Holiday Properties has been working on the detailed plan, which is before us this evening. This matter will again go back to the plan commission, then ultimately come back to the board one more time for final vote, final review. I just think it's important to understand here the process for a plan development, because as the applicant knows, it's long. But it's also structured this way as to get general conceptual plan approval from the board so that applicants don't have to spend a lot of money on a detailed plan if the overall concept is not, is not going to pass, pass muster with, with this board. For, you know, for a general overview, this property currently sits on a portion of the O1 district, which goes up along Vine Street, and then a portion in the I, Institutional Building or IB district. The map amendment would change the approximately .6 acres on the east side of South Grant to O1, which would be consistent with the other portion of the subject property, and also consistent with the properties, the contiguous properties to the north of the subject property. When, we then consider a plan development for an age restricted lifestyle housing in the O1 district for 12 units, which is a special use. Lastly, we will consider the tentative and final plot of subdivision, and then lastly, the sign permit review. I would note here that, you know, we typically don't see a lot of the sign permit reviews, so I haven't done a lot of studying on that. I'm going to look for a lot of direction from the plan commission, which spends a, a great deal of their time on sign permit reviews. The applicant is here tonight to provide an update on the project, also to answer questions. I want to simply highlight changes to the plan since the concept plan was reviewed. Specifically, at our request last time, the applicant has now made the parking spaces code compliant for a total of 21 spaces for the 12 units. I believe that as, as a part of that change to making the, the parking spots code compliant, the applicant's also asking for a waiver on the required loading space on the outside of, on the outside of the building. Detailed changes to the three open spaces surrounding the property, which I'll let the applicant go through. Minor changes to the fence surrounding the property, small changes to the building elevations. The request for, for signage, which I previously mentioned. And then also the condo association bylaws have been provided for us in our packet. I would note that the age restriction here is for 55 years and older for 80% of the units. So that would make it for 10 out of the 12 units. I don't think it's necessary for us to get into a debate, debate on this tonight. We've had, we've got our council looking through that there are some issues with the Fair Housing Act as far as what requirements for age restriction are. And we'll, we'll likely end up following those, those rules that are made from, from organizations that are larger than us. And then lastly, Second Street will remain a one-way street, and the applicant is going to take out the, the slanted parking spots and put in parallel parking spots, and it will increase the size of the public right away and plant two, two trees in the public right away. And then lastly, .6 acres are being removed. That portion that is being changed from IB to, to the office space is being removed from the Zion Lutheran Chan, Church Plan Development. So there's an application here this evening, just simply remove that from their plan development. So we make sure that we paper that correctly. So with that.
Thank you, trustee Stifler. My name is Drew Mitchell. I'm a partner with Holiday Properties. Our office is just down the train tracks in Clarendon Hills. I'm joined by a number of folks today from Holiday. Our anticipated general contractor, Holiday Construction Group, as well as our architect, Chris Walsh from.
We know who you are.
I know you do. I'm so excited to be back here tonight, you guys.
This is your fifth time back.
I know. There are some new trustees, okay? And I was asked to keep it brief. Those of you that know me well probably have run away when I take a breath during conversation. So I will try to be quick this evening. And, and trustee Stifler did a great job, I think, of running through some of the changes. This, there's nothing that's a two-foot pot in the real estate development business, but, but this is a pretty exciting project from the standpoint that we're salvaging a historical structure that's in, that's within Hinsdale, and we're utilizing existing zoning through a zoning change from institutional to O1, where lifestyle housing is a permitted use. It was really the, through assistance from staff that we identified a path to salvaging this beautiful building and also making it and putting it in a, where it provides utility today. It's obsolete. Even our local school district studied moving their offices here and determined that the building's obsolescence was so great that it, it wouldn't work for their purposes. So, and I'm very pleased to see Pastor Jay Klein here this evening. The congregation of Zion continues to be a great supporter of what we're trying to do. This is a tricky process, and I think it's deliberately tricky. And, and there's reasons for that that we, we don't need to get into this evening. So, Chris, I'm going to invite up Chris Walsh, our architect, to talk about some of the changes. And Chris, before we go down any rabbit holes, a reminder for everybody that tonight we are seeking a referral to the plan commission. And it's at that point that we, we then have two, two meetings with the plan commission, and then we come back and we get into detail. And I think, just to piggyback on something trustee, trustee Stifler said, is, there's a separation of concept and detail planning. And, and I think you did a really good job explaining it. It's because we're trying to take the temperature of the community, understand whether or not a project like this has legs and makes sense. This year has been really the, the effort of getting inside this building, understanding exactly what we need to do to introduce the 12 units, to introduce parking. We got rid of the loading zone for, for move-in, move-outs because they will happen so rarely. So Chris, I probably used four of our five minutes, but.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm just going to go through, kind of explaining what has happened, why the changes, how we're able to do some of these things. You had mentioned the parking. We were asking for a variance. We really didn't have great measurements inside the building. We've gone back. We've done some very detailed measurements, tried to figure out how the structure would work. So we were able to make the drive aisles and the, and the parking spaces work. We do have 25 parking spaces. I think you mentioned 21, but we have, we have three outside and 22 inside. So that's how we're, we're hitting the parking. We are asking to remove the loading space with 12 units. It was very hard to really hit the, you know, the requirements for the loading space anyway, just with the way you have to get into the building and all that. Just talking with staff and that, it's really, you know, these people are going to move in once. They're going to be there, you know, they could be there 20 years.
So where did the loading requirement come from? This is.
That's, that's part of the code. It's part of the code, yeah.
For what? This is, we're making this office.
Well, well, think of if you had, if this were a rental property.
Oh, okay.
And you have somebody moving in, you have 15 units.
But it's not under the, I guess my question is not under the zoning code portion of rental property, right?
No.
We're rezoning it as.
For lifestyle housing.
Oh, but it's not under, but it's not being rezoned lifestyle housing either?
No, it was a planned unit development for lifestyle housing in the O1 district.
Okay, and so, okay, got it, okay.
And I, just for my opinion, because I've discussed this a couple of times. I, I agree with the way that you're looking at this. It's, you know, if you guys had 40 units here and it was a six-month rental, you'd have a truck out front.
I'm not disputing, I'm not disputing the need not to have it. I just wondered where it came from, the requirement, or code.
Yeah. The, we are adding the outdoor space. We've.
Just a question on the parking bay. Do you still have it out there? I think one of the things we talked about was a year ago or something. Is there going to be enough room in that aisle there so when you back your big Chevy Suburban out of there, you'll do it without, you know?
Yeah, we actually do a 24-foot aisle now. So we, we've complied with all of the aisle. That was an issue as well, yeah, so.
Okay, good. I think there was just some issue about, but you didn't have all the exact measurements.
Yeah, right. So now that we've clarified the dimensions inside.
And, and just to behaviorally, when people own a parking spot, they learn how to navigate it. You might have a bump the first time, but if any of us have lived in Chicago, Donald, you know what I'm talking about.
So the outdoor space, I don't know if you can see my. We've, we've defined that outdoor area. We hired a landscape architect to really come up with the designs. And we're proposing a grill area with a TV above, and that is one of the things that we're asking for. So we'll work through that with the plan commission. We're also, there was a flagpole. The star is still on the ground. There really isn't a great code for, you know, the height on the, how the flagpole is determined. So that is, that is also now a variance that we're asking for.
The star is an existing footer for a previous flagpole that we intend to utilize.
Yeah. For the fence, you can kind of see there, we actually had to raise the front door of this building. The existing door, we have to raise about one foot four inches, which is going to require us to have a ramp, just similar to what you have here, something like that. So you can kind of see in this picture. The only way we can really figure out how to do it is kind of have a zigzag back and forth ramp, which is going to cause us to offset this wall. We'll have, we'll add stairs to the existing door and raise that. But the, anyone in a wheelchair would have to go to the right there and zigzag up and go on the door on the side. So that's the other thing that we're asking for. The floor plans did change slightly. It was more about moving the elevator. Again, now that we were able to kind of measure the building, understand how people are going to be able to get in there, making the handicap, the accessibility work. We actually had to shift the elevator towards the front, which caused some of the units to shift. We've, we got, we actually had a three-bedroom unit before. We don't have any three-bedroom units anymore. We do have a two-bedroom plus den in the upper right-hand corner. But it's really, it was just kind of minor shifts in the floor plans. We didn't make the building bigger or anything like that. And then building elevations. Again, the accessible ramp and the signage you saw there. So there is the canopy. We're going to have some modest signage on there. These are just the exhibits that you were, I'm sure, were given as well. So that is the other item that we're asking for.
And then the last thing that we worked on was the covenants and bylaws, and that was an attorney, intensive exercise with the village attorney. We hired a local attorney, a gal named Lauren Kavanaugh. The 80% issue came out of that exercise.
So it's, you're saying that's a legal requirement?
Well, I, I, I'm not actually able to speak to that technically today.
No, but I mean, what's your understanding?
My understanding is fair housing, we start to get into a weird area when you say it has to be 55-plus and it's 100% of units, and we're not assisted living. So you.
Okay, so, okay, I guess my thought is, you know, I'd like it to be 100%. But if there's a legal reason why it can't be, certainly we'll follow the law.
We agree.
Yeah. But we're going to look at that.
Michael Morris is already.
Mark, look at, okay. But I don't really view that as an issue for the plan commission. I really view that as a, as a policy issue or a legal issue. Not a plan commission issue, so.
The only thing that I would ask on that, I think it's probably consistent, and I think it'll probably come back at that 80%, which would make two units be available for someone less than 55 years old.
Right.
That those units, if they're less than 55 years old, have to be owner occupied.
Is that, is that possible?
I, I would think that there's a clever way. I specifically, I'm not going to, I'm not sure. But I think we understand the objective. We've previously agreed to the objective. Now it's a matter of, we ran into this in student housing at Notre Dame where you couldn't have, they didn't want us to market to undergrads, and we said, sure, but then we found out that legally we couldn't do that. So, but there were ways that we could do it, so.
Whatever the law is, we'll, we'll follow it, but, yeah, okay.
That's been a good strategy for me.
But, but, but the guiding principle is we want as much of it to be age restricted as possible under the federal law, right? Okay.
Yes, that's, that, that's correct. And then, boy, we're, that may be all that I have.
How are you seeing demand for this?
It's, it's really, it's unusual. It's persistent. There doesn't seem to be as much patience for the process that exists here from the customer base as there is for the development team. We're unusually getting requests to combine units, which would have implications on parking, and we'd be excess parked. And a lot of this feels a lot like, you know, we're not there yet. It, it's really hard to be negotiating with a potential homeowner when we still have a process to work through municipally. And so really, our objective is to get, really get the runway to go and, and bring this building back to life. After that, we're going to really, we started having meetings about, what is the design team? Do we take the units and work with a local builder and a local interior designer? We're, we're worried our customers, our residents are going to rip everything out if we put in a bunch of floors and cabinets. So we don't want to be wasteful, and there needs to be a thoughtful strategy with this. It's just been hard to really focus a lot of energy on, you know, what we're eating for lunch when we still got to make breakfast.
Yeah, but, but I think we all agree that this is a really, really good project. Because I think we all agree that we like to see reused buildings, historically significant buildings in town. This is a real, a real boon for the village. So we really appreciate what you're doing here.
Well, thank you, and we're really eager to come on.
I do have one question.
Yes, please.
And it's a bit of a complicated question. So one of, one of the phenomenons right now in real estate is that you, there's a number of investment firms and various hedge funds that are purchasing like properties such as this, where they'll come in and they'll buy everything with the intention of renting those properties.
Yeah.
Have you been approached by any of those entities? And in the event that you were, how, how would you react to a proposal like that?
So we are seeing this. You're seeing, you're seeing, once again, condo deconversion in a meaningful scale in the suburbs of Chicago. There's a couple hundred unit we just went through the Friday before the fourth, taking condos, converting, down converting to rentals, doing exactly what you're talking about. I don't think that actually could happen here. I think it's because of the way that our bylaws, and this is where I need to be able to speak word for word for my condo and the bylaws. But I don't think we can do short-term rentals.
Right.
And, and so I think what we've done is we've effectively said these need to be owner occupied. And then what I've seen done in the city is you can only have, if you start to have too much rentals in a building, people can't get a mortgage on it, and there's other issues. So what, what I am willing to say right now is we'll do everything in our power to prevent that specific situation if you have concern about it. I have not been approached yet by a REIT or a large institutional. But this is, this is roughly a six to eight million dollar project, and it just probably isn't showing up on their radar. So.
And it's a great project. I mean, I just, I just was curious.
I need a lender. Any, anybody know of any lenders?
One right behind you.
Oh, hi Dennis.
But I think that the bylaws do prohibit short-term rentals, so I think that's the protection we have.
That's the protection.
Yeah.
And, and to clarify, a major change like that would require the board to approve that change.
Right, because the bylaws would be part of the plan development.
Correct.
Right, so it runs with the land, right?
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Look forward to seeing you guys this fall.
Yep. Eddie?
No, and this, so.
Alex, do you have any?
Sorry.
So as far as the process we vote on this this evening, any other comments from anybody else in the audience? Hearing none, trustees, President Colley?
Nope.
All right, hearing none, I'm going to make an emotion to approve a referral of a map amendment and concurrent plan development detailed plan, exterior appearance and site plan review, tentative and final plot of subdivision, and sign permit review for Vine Street Station for consideration by the plan commission.
Second.
Will call vote?
Trustee Pashima? Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher? Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Bink?
Aye.
And trustees, if you could leave your packet behind for, so perhaps in another month or two, we can see these again?
So we have no discussion items, any staff reports? Okay, no reports from advisory committees? Any assistance petitions? Anybody left over? Didn't get a chance to talk? Nope? Okay.